And since then, a new problem's arisen. So should we just... I'm asking you guys, as a council member, do you want me to not obey the law?
No, what I told them is that can you get 100 feet? And I would sign off on that permit. That's equitable in my eyes. That's why I'm the planer.
So that's been stated, that's been a statement from our plan.
Hold on.
From our planning.
Eric doesn't have the right to overrule the code. Eric can't really make that statement.
Well, no, I will approve that.
You will, but...
I will sign off on that. You guys are the ones that have to issue the permits.
And if we have our, if we have our planning committee president or chair signing off on plans that don't meet the code, that's a big red flag for me.
It is. You should hire somebody else.
I didn't say that.
No, I'm saying that.
No, I didn't say that. But would it be a red flag to you if I was just over here signing off things that didn't meet the code?
Well, yeah, you're not the planner.
Okay, but if I were and you were me, would it make you nervous? You bet it would.
So one thing we do have, and I hit your point very well, John, and I'm usually on your side of, you know, the code's the code and it needs to be changed if we want it changed and we don't do anything until. We do have the right, though, to override that and we have done that and not that set out septics, but different things to try to make things work for folks. So I'm not saying yes or no. I'm throwing this out that every situation is unique and we have the legal right to be able to do that. Now, whether we want it or not, that's, we'll get into discussions, but we have the right.
At this point, you can meet the 100 feet.
He cannot meet the 100 feet.
Can be done.
He can meet 70 feet.
Well, from existing...
So wait a minute. Wait a minute. Blake, can you meet 100 feet?
The only way I can meet 100 feet is if I measure where exactly where her is, I can on the 100 feet property line, the property line, I can meet 200 feet from her system and 100 feet off of the fence.
So these wonderful pink lines are 100 feet from the setbacks. So that angle line is 100 feet from here, and straight line is 100 feet from here, and this is 100 feet from the front. There's arguably something about the size of that.
But that's not what the code says, no.
The code says 100 feet from an existing system, right?
20 yards are subject to that. When we get that thing from the neighbor, then maybe that's where the rabbit has to be. Like I've said, it doesn't say from property line. I understand.
Well, it says 100 feet.
Well, really, this board is going to have to decide. And that's, so that's why it's here.
I heard something could be worked out with the other neighbor at that point.
Did anybody say my job was easy?
[laughing]
Put it big for something, and you've got to be salt away from a dwelling. That doesn't say anything about a property line.
Is that from another septic system?
With a septic system, you're saying it needs to be 200 feet away from an existing septic system.
What I'd like to see is if you guys can vote on and approve it tonight, subject to, you are getting a note from the neighbor guy if he would do that. If he would not, then better approve the house and not the septic system or its location, subject to either looking at the 200 feet or getting something from the other neighbor to encroach 50 feet or 100 foot by 100 foot into his lot and he still has the entire three-quarter recipe's long line open.
To me, that ain't a solution.
Anytime when you drill well on your lots and you've got your 100 feet from another well or another sewer, you've already impacted that in the other guy's lot, they don't make you place that well right at the dead center of your lot. They still allow you to put it. You still take into consideration other people's septic and things and make it work, but you do not pop that well right at the dead center of your lot, 100 feet, 100 feet, 100 feet from it. You place it in a well-designed place and look at this with some, what would you do? And what else can I do with it? I'm doing absolutely best that I can. I don't feel you guys are going to take these lots and these people and say they are unbuildable and it's not going to happen. I understand you might want to work through the things and adjust it.
Right now, that 100 feet seems to be that our planners feels being equitable is the right way to go. There's good, strong reasoning and I get it. So that 100 feet. I would like, if you could do that 100 feet, then John doesn't feel it solved, but...
These lots are kind of, once again, a special situation for those lots. For me, I'm speaking personally, if that's our, being equitable is the fairer way to go and we can work that. You know, we want to try to work things out and, you know, which John had mentioned, you know, it could take two or three months and that's really, really quick to change that footage and things.
Mayor?
Yes?
He doesn't have to be 100 feet off the north property line.
That's not in the code.
Well, but he doesn't have... I mean, I am the north property owner, so as long as you're 200 feet, which is the code for my septic, which you will be, because it's slightly...
The house or septic or both?
Septic.
Okay.
So, I mean, you won't have any problems on the property line.
So you're saying you allow me to put it within closer than 100 feet of the fence on your side?
So you would just have to slide 30 feet, basically?
No, probably flip it.
And put it behind the house?
Which I think is probably what you're thinking. Move the house to the south, move the septic to the north, and house is put away from you.
Or you get a letter from the person on the opposite side. If that's, I mean, I say I don't think the code says it has to be 200 feet, but if that's what you want, then that's an idea. It says from other septic, not from property, but you want it. As long as I have permission from one of the other owners to take that 100 feet into their property.
I would be okay with that. I don't know what...
You know what I am. It's absolutely nothing personal. Absolutely nothing personal.
With that being said, I will call for a motion.
I'll make a motion to allow that 100 feet away from an existing septic.
Would we have that in the letter or both?
Yes, but 200 from me is technically separate from the law.
200, okay. Make a motion to accept a septic tank being 200 feet away from an existing septic tank. And if it does impact a neighbor, that would be required for a signed letter from the existing impacting lot.
Okay, you have a motion? You have a second? Shouldn't it be a bleached system, not a septic tank?
Yeah, are you talking about the drain field or the tank?
Take it with a correction.
Correction, drain field.
Here's a difference.
You got a second?
Yeah, second.
We got a motion and a second. Any last discussion about it?
Yes, I would like to ask our planning commission members.
Okay.
What you feeling? You're here tonight, joint meeting.
Well, I think I've already stayed in my bed. I think when we accepted lots less than five acres, we threw out that chapter code. And it never came up when we brought it in, because that should have been made clear when we accepted those lots of record. You should have said, yes, you have a lot of record, but you can't build on it because there's this. And I think by not doing that, we were unable to now hold it to that code. As far as being equitable without the lot lines, splitting the difference, I think that is more than appropriate, so that you're not putting, you know, your drain field in, by our code it has to be, I realize that's not necessary, but, you know, to split that with 100 feet, I think that's fair.
Now, the neighbor?
I feel fair about that. That is, the other neighbor, if you're 200 feet from my drain field, you're good. And I can show you right where it is.
Okay, Gary.
I've been one for making sure we don't impact the other properties, and I think this is a solution. I'm not the point that I think we shouldn't let people build. I think that we're learning things and maybe in the future, if this issue comes up again as far as accepting the lots or something, we look at that a little closer and tell them upfront, but to be at the point of getting a building permit, purchasing the lot, I think we're damaging, if we said no, we'd be damaging the property owner a lot more than we'd be damaging the town and the neighbors. And so I think we should do it, especially since Jay has kindly agreed to let that move over so that it...
I'm the only neighbor, so it's not like he's in a subdivision and he's impacting everybody or the other ones.
Very good.
revert comment? Any other discussion?
Yeah, just on the education part, it is not the town's responsibility to educate people. When someone buys a lot, we are not responsible to say, you can do this, you can do this, but you can't do this. That's not our responsibility to educate. We need to try and do as much as we can to help them understand, but for us to come back and say, we didn't tell them, or we didn't teach them, or we didn't show them, is not about the point.
What we're doing, the businesses, generally, every business owner in here is violating code.
Yeah, and we've approved those. Okay? But it's the business...
No, we've ignored those.
Ignored, yeah.
We haven't approved them. We've just turned it blind.
Ignore them, you're right. And the reason we've done that is because we're changing.
And we said, how many of you have seen this code? We didn't hand it out to you.
Is that our responsibility?
Yeah, well, that same thing. We didn't hand them the code and we gave them the business license.
It's the kind thing to do.
Nate, I would, I would bet there's not, maybe Joe, you know this. Is there any towns that give the building license regulations when you apply for a business license? I doubt there is. It's not our responsibility to do that.
However, ours is, on their application they signed, that they are in conformance with the downtown.
Yeah, so they're asked to even read it. It's not our job to teach these people. It's our, we want to be as friendly and helpful and everything as we can, but to come back and say, we didn't tell them, so we're going to approve it, has no, has no merit with me.
Any other discussion? Yeah, the person in second, finish your discussion. You have a hall of favor?
Can we restate that just before we all?
Yep. No, you can't. Good luck.
Are you serious? I'm going to have to listen to it and get it down and work on it.
Okay, so your, the gist of that was you made the motion for 200 feet or the 100-foot letter. Is that correct?
That's what I heard. Did you use your hand for the...
It needs to be...
For the drain field.
It needs to be...
Or?
100 feet off that south property line.
100?
And 200 feet from the north septic.
And that's already code anyway, though, the 200 feet, right?
That's correct.
So 100 feet off the property.
It's in the motion, but it's also already part of the code.
Okay, or the letter from the other owner, right on the other side.
Yeah, if you choose to go left direction.
They give two options.
Right now, Jay will give you a sign off on that one. You'll be all right.
Okay, I'm good.
Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'd say your lot, though.
You cannot say it hasn't been reasonably debated.
No.
Well done. Well, thank you guys for your time.
Never get a burger. George, he'll never get back.
Yeah, I go home, kids already bed, so...
It's weird, dirty.
Thank you guys for your time, Paul and Jerry, that's a lot to put in.
Thanks for coming.
Number 10, planning department report, code violations and enforcement.
Holy cow, almost scared to say.
Among those lines, can I, can I make a motion?
Sure.
I would like to make a motion that if...
I move.
If planning overrides any code, that it ought to be addressed to this council.
Yeah, you definitely need to hire a new planner because I do that every day.
Right.
It's up to the discretion of the planner. It says it in the code, so that's what I use.
Okay.
If any code is overwritten, it should come before the council to be reasoned.
True, I agree with that.
If that code's not working, it needs to be redone.
Trust me, if it's an issue, it came, and that's why it's here, is because I said it.
So the issue that you have, let's get on the next month and start working on it.
Okay.
Because we're going to have more of these.
Okay, so...
Exact same thing.
The only, this is just how we handle issues. It makes me nervous that we just neglected the RA 5 acre and some...
What's your reading?
Back in the planning department, where they accepted those, they got a lot of records.
We did not do that.
Well, I would agree that in some sort of, once we accepted, we have up to this point, I think there's been a lot of record that they were built. Now, this is a different situation.
So are you okay with planning, just overriding the code?
I'm not okay with planning just overriding the code.
That's all I'm saying, is if planning overrides a code, I would like to know about it or understand it or be aware of it.
That's what I did tonight. If the correctors, I believe he is, the code gives him that discretion, so it is, that's why it's brought to our...
But help me understand this then.
If these lots come up, we need to bring that up. It may be a lot of record, but this is not going to be a billable lot.
So help me understand this.
Yeah, but we can't please that. People are selling lots in this town and we cannot say, if somebody decides to sell somebody two acres, that, the town doesn't know about it. You go down there, you record it, it's done.
Yeah.
We don't know about it and all of a sudden somebody shows up and wants a permit.
Yeah.
Well, sorry, that doesn't...
This one, yeah.
We have been the rules to say, okay, you have a lot of record certificate, we, as a town, will honor that, and it's, and it's a lot of record. We are under no obligation to do that as a town. That was done prior in county.
But right now, since we approved this, you're going to have a hard time not approving all the others. And this is not my point. My point is if, if planning has to override code to approve a lot or give a building permit, I would like this council to know about it.
Let me ask you this question. Is there a time that we haven't, that we haven't known about a substantial issue?
Check that on your thing.
Every, every month, right?
Every month.
Okay, so, so this, this is just a list of things that were done, right?
Yep. Any questions?
Yeah. Go ahead. See, see, that's, that's what I'm, as the planner, Eric, you just said, you, the planning commission doesn't have...
The planning commission does not.
Have ability to override code.
That's correct.
The planner himself does.
Yeah.
So the planner, as an individual, completely independent of everybody, can override code?
I don't think it says override. I'm trying to find it right here.
Or whatever.
You're right.
Right. Interpretation. He has the, what is it, Ryan?
Interpretation.
Interpretation. Interpretation. Okay. So the interpretation lies at the planner. You can take that away.
Well, I... I'm not sure what interpretation is, because I wonder how you interpret some things so differently.
Oh, what do you mean? We just talked about it for an hour at least. Everybody had a different interpretation of that.
I don't think we had a different interpretation. I think we decided to override it.
No, I think you had different interpretation on everybody you talked to.
Really? On the five acre one, no septic tank on five acres? How do you...
And the 200 feet?
Sure, I understand that one. I understand that one.
You stole it from somebody else. I mean, there's always an interpretation.
Sure, I understand some of those. I guess the only point I want to make is that I would like to know if those code violations or those code overrides as a council member.
And I agree with John, and I, so my question is, don't we usually find that out? And he's saying that, so he asks if just more, maybe more detail on the sheet?
Yeah, and, and just if there's a code override or a code neglect or something like that.
So when you say all the time, give me an instance for like an override that we wouldn't know about or that wouldn't come before us.
You would know about all of them because I'm your planner, but I can't speak for your next guy, who's just coming pretty fast, so I'm like...
So Eric and I talk on a regular basis and I can't think of one interpretation. I mean, this is a good one that Eric and I disagreed on, have different interpretations, and it came here. So I, there are times where Eric and I make calls and move forward, but then it's come up in a planning report. So I can't think of anything that...
That's all I'm asking.
Has been even, I mean, has been anything that was not cut and dry that didn't come up in a planning meeting either before or after.
I'm not going to go out on a limb and hang my ass. I'm going to make you guys. That's why it's here.
Okay, the only thing that made me nervous is earlier tonight, he said, I would have approved this if they would have had 100 feet.
I would have. That was equitable.
And, and, and that's your opinion of equitable?
It is.
With the five acre thing, that was just totally dumped. And I would like to know about that.
And you do.
Not, not that I disagree or not that I'd fight it, but that I know about.
Having worked with Eric for seven or eight years now, whether it was before or after that would have come up, you know, every issue that's been remotely, you know, required interpretation or thought or debate has come up in a planning report either before or after as an action item for what you want me to do here.
And I, and I think so too. And I'm not saying Eric does a bad job. He's done more for this town than anybody else by far.
I second that.
But I, I would like to know of these changes. And when he said, I wouldn't have even brought it to you if he had 100 feet, that makes me nervous.
Eric, I agree.
But it should have came. It would have been on the report.
Okay, then that's great. That's great.
And I, and I get Ryan, you know, I mean, we have these discussions all the time, me and Ryan, that's why we're staffed, but, you know, when it comes down to it, I just, I won't sign anything that I'm not comfortable with.
I know, you're awesome at that, Eric. Can you do an awesome job?
It's going to come, so. I'm here by appointment.
By yourself.
Nope.
Well, that got blowing up a little bit, didn't it?
So I would say by looking at this and answering, answering the question, we usually kind of go through this, Hudson property review for lot record and billable lot certificate. Bringing up on that particular one...
Okay, which one, sorry?
Hudson, the very first item.
Hudson, we have a request for a billable lot.
And where is this?
Talking on Mill Road, Hudson. Talking on Mill Road. Those lots were all subdivided back prior to the town.
The three on the highway?
No, well, outwards, Stephanie and...
Nate?
Nate?
Who's supposed to be supposedly illegally subdivided back when?
I don't know. It's been a court, I know there's a court history on those lots. There was a request and so they were, they've been gathering, we've been going back and forth with email and phone calls, but they're looking to make a lot and build on that lot.
And that's that builder's...
Yeah, it's the one where all the drilling equipment is on...
Yep, Stephanie driveway takes off from it on the right side, east outside of it.
Is that where they're going to build or is it behind Lonnie and...
Well, that lot actually does a zigzag, and so it's an irregular shaped law. And so I don't know where they will put on the property. Obviously, they'll have some setback issue with the septic and other things like that.
How much shake?
I think it's 3.84.
It is lot record.
I don't know that.
That's what we're waiting for.
That's what I'm waiting on. I've, I've got the, the plot maps and when they was recorded back to 19, no, 1890. And so we have the history. They're working very diligently on that and I'm working with them, so that's why that shows up on the report.
Okay. Peterson accession we discussed already, Gerald Smith lot line adjustment. Does anyone, I know, I understand that. Does anyone have any questions about that?
Yeah, we got some questions.
I thought they were going to get back to me with the minutes that were supposed to be, but Gerald Smith folks are supposed to be reviewing our council minutes from April, but John Godowski made a motion that, again, Eric and I are reading the text and interpreting it differently. So the motion, and I didn't, I have a...
I'm a tear, John.
So your, your motion in April regarding the Gerald Smith, what did you mean? Because I'm sure you remember it. There was a question about moving the water meter and whether or not we could approve it. And so your motion spoke to, we should have them work on relocating the water meter, and it didn't speak to the approval. And I thought...
Did we continue? We continued it, though, right? Or that's keeping that? Yeah.
The motion didn't say, so I left the meeting with the impression that if we could resolve, if staff could resolve the meter issue, it was, we'd resolve the other, we all thought it was dumb, but we could approve it because maybe we need to change the code on regular shaped lots, but it was good to go if the meter was resolved. And Eric thought it was going to come back here if we could resolve the meter issue. So I guess my question is, what was your intent?
I'm agreeing with Eric. What is it as a verbiage? Don't you have that? Or you looked at it at one time, like it was approved or continued or...
Well, the discussion was continued to the following month, which didn't happen, but that doesn't really deal with his motion.
Believe it, if you guys were able to take care of it, take care of it, deal with it.
Well, is it payment issues or cost issues involved, right?
Yeah, so the issue is, well, so they're willing to move the water meter. I think we, oh, I think we've worked out a way that that'll get moved. The question is, if they, they do that, can we approve the plot or does it need to come back here for approval?
He's looking for... The interpretation was, you made a motion to move the meter and it was coming back here.
After they moved it or what?
After they moved the meter. That was what the motion was, move the meter and then we'll look at the plot.
My understanding was too, so that little hour of any feet came up, you know, 10 feet off or eight feet off and stretched down, and then we had the meter to get moved over. And I'd love to hear the exact words of the motion to...
So has it been done?
No, no, meter's not been moved, but they're asking for, they're, they're willing to post money, and then we hired a contractor to move, that has given us a price to move the meter. So they're going to post the money, but they want us, they want to post the money, have us sign the plot, and then we'll move the water meter. And the hangup is that if you approve the, move the water meter and then come back here, we can't do that. If you approve the, let's get the water meter moved and it's good to go, then we can. Which is a good process here.
I might as well stall on that little, I've stalled on that.
So if the motion was that it's approved when the water meter's moved, we can move forward.
The lot was approved, gets the water key moved.
The lot line adjustment was approved when the water meter's moved. We've come to an agreement and we can move forward with it. If the motion was move the water meter and then come back here and we'll talk about it, then I can't move forward.
No.
I should have brought that minutes to you.
I'm like, I'm, I'm holding.
Okay, you do. And that's, so that's what I thought we'd do and we, we couldn't get past the water meter movement. And I know John had said, that's not the intent of that code. We said, well, that's the letter of the code, because they could do that little jog, remember that discussion? So we followed it not, followed it last night or prior April, now we override. It draws.
It's late.
Hey, why are you looking that up? Hey, why are you looking that up?
Sorry, John, I don't got a mountain due for you.
That wouldn't be strong enough, Eric.
Oh, it helps.
Okay. Councilmember Godowski moved to accept moving of the meter and a new be, meter being installed on a newly formed lot. Motion was seconded by Councilmember Bateman. Co-Team Mayor Bunker asked for any further discussion, become Norris inquired on behalf of Bell Davis, who lives east of the new lot, what is going to happen to his existing lot and how does it fit in the, in the formation of a new lot to his west?
Pretty big, that could bring it along.
Nick Floss answered, he feels it is more appropriate to look at that issue when a permit to build on a Smith property is pulled. This issue can be addressed in a civil arena between the two neighbors. The vote for the motion on the table was as follows. A vote from both Team Mayor Bunker, Councilmember Godowski and Bateman, with a may vote from Councilmember Lawter, the motion carried.
Okay, so go back to your, your verbiage of your motion.
Accept the moving of the meter, the new meter being installed on a newly formed lot.
I don't hear plot anywhere in that motion.
But what about the, what is the newly formed lot?
I say we just make a new motion or something and.
Yeah, so my question is, do you want it to come back here or is it approved? Just provide it the meter gives motion.
What we did is we came away from that and, uh, in the spirit of cooperation, the town offered to move that meter for $2,500 and have our contractor do that. There was no action taken by the, by these folks. Our contractor came to town, made the water meter and left. Then we got a demand letter from the law firm, which they strongly regret because that just makes me stop. So we stopped. And we'll figure it out in court, if that's what we gotta do, great, here's the motion, I don't think we ever approved that, Ryan thought we did approve it. It's back here for you guys to approve it. If that's your.
Do you have a recommendation?
The meter's not moved, uh, we made that offer, I believe Ryan's checked with our contractor, he'll come back and do that.
He's sitting right there, right?
You'll come back and.
Been a long time on a bid, still a while.
Maybe you won't do it for that money, I don't want to buy you on the spot, so you don't have to answer that.
I'd rather put him on the spot than me since it's his price.
So.
So we need to make that.
Basically, they demanded that that was the final thing, if they moved the meter, we agreed to the plot, I said, we haven't looked at the plot, there may be other issues.
Okay.
What would be the other issues?
I don't know, I haven't seen the plot.
So I'm, I'm moved, I'm moved we don't approve it and we wait to see the plot?
I mean, if everything on the plot works out, then fine, but I, I don't think that we've seen enough of the plot. We've been through two different attorney's offices with this, with this applicant, or I have, I should say.
Okay, what is, what is, uh, seems to be the, um, well, that we're not seeing.
I can't say cause we're on camera.
Bottom line, hasn't he, we haven't got the plot, and so I can't, that's the issue.
There may be, there may be other issues with this, we got a hundred foot of frontage, we know that because that's why they adjusted the front, I don't know about the other issues.
So you're doing a lot of adjustment?
Nine, some acres.
It's nine acres, I know we have some easements through that property that may affect, I don't know.
As far as building from it, the easement?
Yeah. I haven't seen it, I haven't seen it, have you seen a plot with P U E around it?
Yeah, I have that.
You've seen that, so see, those issues I haven't. But I don't know if this board's seen that, I don't know that planning staff's seen that.
Ron, I've said the, with, uh, answers that needed, uh, the questions that needed to be answered and have been answered.
Not the first meeting, I've had to apologize for being so anal.
No, I think they got my answer, so maybe they come to the next meeting. I'm, I'm good with that, I just need a clarification.
I mean, if he submitted a plot, he doesn't have to be the meeting. If he submitted a plot, we can look at the plot, run through the process, they don't have to be here.
So I just need a clarification, I don't. I don't have a dog in the fight, I'm okay with either answer.
Yeah, well, yes, you do, you represent the town, you have a dog in the fight. I give you a dog.
Thanks, I mean, I.
I know, but to facilitate these guys, I thought we'd, we'd worked, you know, getting through the meter and we'd just take care of that and the spirit of cooperation.
Two separate issues rather than one issue.
Right, and so, and then all of a sudden the demand was, if you, if we do this, you'll sign the plot. Well, I'm not there yet, so. I don't know, I, I, it's not the process, so. If you read that motion and it was voted to plot, I'm good with that.
And I'm good if that wasn't, I just did, did know.
So we just need to, need to get a plot in here and get it approved?
You know, sometimes me and Ryan don't agree.
And we like agreement and, uh, and I didn't, I didn't quite hear that, uh, as well as, as Eric.
No, you weren't here.
No, I wasn't, just talking, having you guys talking. I mean, I didn't hear that in the motion, that's why I wanted to hear the words twice or two times, uh, I didn't hear that as well and it sounds like it needs to come back, so.
Well, so I need to bring the plot back for the next meeting and get it approved.
And so you approve it?
So do we have a plot?
Yes.
We do.
We do have the plot.
Okay, and that's been application submitted?
Yeah.
So we should be reviewing that plot.
Yeah, the application's been submitted, they submitted a paper application and then when they got to Kaiserman, he required the Mylar, so they printed Mylar and that's been circulated.
With the signatures?
Matches the paper, and so it's got all the signatures on it, it's just for the county officials.
Does this have to go before the council or is it something that?
So the way you just answered my question, yes, I think it does.
Okay. Coming back to the council.
So coming back to the council.
And we don't need a motion for that because that was, we just clarified.
I just need a clarification, is it coming back in the next over meeting?
So, now we're at the point where you can make a motion to approve it, so you don't find any issues at, at planning staff, or you can require to come back here before the council?
We'll make a motion that the, the planning staff can approve this plot, so they can move forward with the water.
We're looking for the plot now, we got the water.
For the plot, you got the water, man.
And so.
I'd like the council to see the plot just because of, uh, the position they're in, uh, if we're demanding of anything, I wanna see them at myself, so.
Is that part of the discussion going on?
I spoke to him, that would, that would be part of the discussion. We have a, we have a motion, we have a second.
Make a motion, they have to come back before the council.
Again, in the spirit of cooperation, I think that works, doesn't it, Ryan?
I'm good with it.
So, I will second your motion.
Second motion and discussion, I spoke early, uh, I think it oughta come back to the council as well, I'd like to see it before I vote on it, so, um, so.
Just as a note.
Any other discussion?
As a note, Chip, you will be able to see that because you are a signature on the.
But I can discuss it with all of us before I sign it.
Yes, yes, I'll sign it.
Use the right.
Any other discussion, we have a, a motion and a second? No more discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, come back.
Thank you.
Maybe something?
Yeah, I don't think that was a motion. The motion was, if, if, yeah.
Like a motion to, for the.
The, the planning staff had no issues with it, it would move forward.
All right, okay.
I think you voted wrong.
Didn't you change your motion, John?
Yes, I changed the motion.
Oh, well, maybe I voted wrong, what's your motion? Resape the motion!
Motion that the, that go before the planning staff and then if okay, come back before the council.
If it's okay, then come back.
If it's okay, then come back.
You're saying planning staff, and you've corrected me on that before, that that's you and Ryan?
That's correct.
You mean the planning commission?
I don't know, tis motion.
Planning staff.
Planning staff is me and Ryan.
So when Eric and I are happy, it comes to the next council meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's what I understood, that's right.
Oh, we don't need a motion for that because that's where it goes, that's the natural path.
So we don't need this motion?
No, if, if you was approving it based on if me and Ryan were happy, it would move forward, then, then we need a motion. If you wanna see it here, then you don't need a motion. Because that's the natural way to go.
Okay, so.
Let's come back.
Draw your motion? Do you need to withdraw, or are we gonna have it go back?
I think you can leave it, it's a motion, it doesn't really do anything.
We're headed that way.
It doesn't change anything, but it doesn't comply either.
Okay.
I know what I need to do, I'm good.
Okay, go ahead.
And so I, as far as the water meter in this gentleman, we're on hold or would we?
Yeah, we're on hold until, I don't have their check, so we're on hold.
We're definitely on hold. We're definitely on hold, okay.
So did you get everything you needed?
No, one more thing.
Okay, so we're headed to it.
I hope so.
Okay.
What else is it, we'll jump right to it.
Uh, maybe the ash drive. Approval warrants is where we're gonna do that, isn't it?
We won't jump to that, you'll have to wait. Any other questions on there?
School water line and a modification agreement, is there something different than, that has come up since?
No, we just have, been working with that, with the modification agreement that we signed. With regards to the easement that they gave to Central. Yeah, CUP that they didn't own, so we're still working through that, that is an active document.
Are you getting any, any resistance with regards to them saying?
Every corner.
Okay. Well, and, uh, did Richie's small scale subdivision, um, I'm unaware of that, anyone have any questions on that? Aaron Baker, uh, possible annexation inquiry, that's across the highway.
That's across the highway.
Uh, Don Roberts' possible annexation, um.
I have his map, he was gonna be here tonight, I guess he contacted you.
He withdrew, they called, no, this is, they called and said he was out of town at a meeting that went too long and he couldn't make the meeting go.
What he did, he did submit and what he found was that the legal description was incorrect, so, or had it mistaken it, and so he withdrew that part and had it redone, so I have the map and then he was gonna bring the, uh, new verbiage on the legal description to the council.
So it sounds like he wants the dollars I had across his teeth so he doesn't have any chickens. Okay, uh, Mountain Land Mag High Court for a preservation agreement, I think our next meeting is, is it, end of the month?
Yep, 27th.
Okay, irrigation, M and I water conversion.
I think that's Jones, turn report back.
What's that one?
You went to that meeting?
Oh.
Isn't that right?
That was right. What was the gist of the meeting?
The gist of the meeting was, is, uh, anybody that, uh, had irrigation water on the fields and if they converted that to go around their house, that it was going to be increased from approximately 350 a share to about 300 and something a share. If they're using it on their yard.
And, and that's, uh, and so they said that it is, that change has been made?
Because it's, it says that, it's a change and so, that's the biggest gist I got out of it.
And so, so with all that, with all the valley?
So that, when, uh, if you got, uh, 20 acres out, you got a hundred shares of water and you decide, well, let's say I've got a two acre lot, I'm gonna convert, uh, three shares to five shares of water from that field to your yard where your house is, mother, or lot or garden or whatever, that they were going to charge those water shares that went on to the yard at a rate of $300 a share plus per year.
Which irrigation companies is that?
All.
Come down from the state, right?
That's from the state.
So then, uh, is that for?
Is that about what, uh, did I hear that correctly?
Oh yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So then would that be? You're paying $3.50 because it's subsidized at the federal level, our ag water is, and as soon as you convert that to M and I, this is the amortization schedule of that loan that they're paying, so it's 50 years, it will end in 50 years. And so wherever you're at in there, the second that it's converted to M and I, they no longer subsidize, so you're now paying the entire amount of that water.
But that happens on the change?
Yes.
Is there an actual definition to M and I? And is it accepted by the feds?
By the what?
By the feds?
By the feds?
They're the ones who do it.
This, this is the federal contract with the legal descriptions and all the, I shouldn't say that, this is the draft contract that the feds submitted in the, in the, in the, uh, meeting with the, with the Central Utah Water District who is facilitating M and I conversion at the request of the irrigation companies.
So just for kicks, what is, what does M and I mean?
Municipal and industrial water.
So watering your lawn is municipal and industrial?
It is, it's not an agricultural use.
That's a stat.
What if I have goats out on the water?
Then that becomes a pasture.
There you go, if I had goats.
I try, still gotta get goats.
And so, the, the central Utah water is facilitating that at the request of the irrigation companies here in the valley, uh, in conjunction with the county. And so, as you can see, it's $3.10 is the rate that you're paying for your ag water. And the second that it gets converted to M and I, which the first application is for Twin Creeks, is that correct? Twin Creeks has requested 300 shares be converted to M and I. And so that's been, how long has that been?
About a half, six weeks?
It's been like six years.
Oh, oh.
To, to get the process going and once it's processed, I think they'll be able to do this, submit the request in a fall and it'll be done in a spring.
And this is, this is like if Daniel, Daniel Town has one share or whatever shares it is, then it's gonna be converted to this instead of the.
Some municipalities are gonna automatically be converted over that they're holding all the shares when they, when Eber takes shares or we take shares or?
No, you have to request that, you have to request the.
The change.
The change. And I, I, I didn't get the answer to it, but I'm pretty sure that there is a, a conversion. Uh, what would you call that?
Haircut?
Yes, haircut, that's a good term, that the state will impose on those shares.
Drop the water volume as far as the haircut?
They will take a cut of that in that conversion, cause that's what happens when you convert from irrigation to well, they'll take a cut of that.
Then if you have more shares, will they, so right now, for those who have enough shares, they say, it doesn't matter how many shares, you can't use any more water, you, but you're getting all, you can get through that service line if you have more shares. Now, if you have those shares to, to water more stuff, will they accept that more?
No.
Do you understand my question, I didn't say it very well?
Yes, I understand what you're saying, but because it is not, uh, part of the plan on, on the whole irrigation system is to be conservation minded as you can get, and that's part of the conservation, part of these grants is that they, they determine how many acres feet you need for the property.
So they're looking more or less to take whatever water they can conserve, put it into the.
What about the people that have field, they wanna build a house on it and they've got enough, and so they need X amount for their field and they need X amount for their yard. If that's your town, when they, when they go to convert that to change it over, then that's what it is.
Yeah.
So what about our irrigation meters?
What about irrigation?
Meters for your house.
Well, no, we.
Your yards.
You have.
I have so many shares irrigation, I have so many shares in my meter. Is that still considered irrigation because it's in my irrigation meter and it's billed through my irrigation company, are they gonna convert that?
No, they won't convert unless your irrigation company requests that.
Okay.
Yeah, your irrigation company will have to request that and then they facilitate it.
And it's already happened, so it's requested that?
Yes, Twin Creeks has requested that, it's been quite processed to get to this point, but they live a stream on it.
Good report.
That's careless, but Jesus, honey, that did me.
Before we leave planning, can I make one comment?
Yeah, we're not done, we still got code violations and enforcement.
Just this sheet, when I, when I look at what Eric's doing, I, I think we almost need a full-time person. He's got a full-time job and he's put 142 planning hours and 50 blue stakes, that's another full-time job plus. So I, I think we oughta, our council oughta consider starting with thinking about a full-time employee. That's it.
Okay. Take that one, take that note.
I think we talked about that.
Okay, we're still number 10, do we have anything to report on code violations and enforcement?
No, we're on holding pattern.
Okay, with the garden.
Jay and I were saying we moved, we'd like to, uh.
Planning commission is gonna move to a church.
Third portion of the meeting.
Deny. Only two of you, you can't carry the load.
I mean, we were never a valid meeting, we can just win.
That's why I asked you for your opinion.
That's why she raised the cup, that's right.
Thank you. Um.
On some knee roads right there.
With regards to one issue and timing and letters and communication, um, what, what's happening there as far as, I know Ryan may have do calls, the messages, uh, messages have been returned, thereby, I would like to see a letter go out.
Okay, did you do that, have you made contact with, uh, what's that, mobile home?
Since we last talked, I did call him one more time. And I thought I sent you a text, but when I went back through my texts, I can't find it, so, yes, I called him one more time after we talked.
Okay, will you send me a timeline on those, I'll include that in the letter and I'll issue a letter that will show you probably how to break some action.
Okay, great. Anything else on number 10? Okay, approval of council meeting minutes on August 8th, 2016, anyone get a chance to look at those, and so, we made changes to those.
Well, I can't really change what Councilman Bateman said, but I believe in the second page, halfway down at all the shares in Storm Haven are being utilized, I think. I think that should say water rights. Cause I don't know if there's shares in that.
No, it's not type of shares, it's just a water rate.
He's not here, so I totally understand that we don't want to change that.
Is that the only, the only thing that might have popped up?
Yes, sir.
There's a motion to accept the minutes. August 8th meeting, and that's it.
Your motion, the second.
John wasn't here. Okay, second.
The motion, uh, motion and a second, any last discussion on it? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, council meeting minutes approved. Recorder's office warrant, approval announcements established date for budget amendment, public hearing.
Can we jump to this guy's minutes?
Uh, we're, we're right on it, we're on it.
That's a warrant, shoot that down to land. Shoot that down to land.
We can do any municipal water first in that little address.
Thank you.
Reimbursement for postage, sending up the water bills, century until Eber Light and Power as for the second or third month in a row been lower. So maybe we'll have passed the $600 month, I don't know.
And which one did you say on, on Eber Light? Okay.
Well, then we offset that, so the pump would cycle.
And so that's the second month in a row that we've been down this well compared to when it was the first two months.
So we haven't, we're still doing it manually, because Gary's, Gary's turning it on to do sampling, so the program, you can just turn it on and it's coming on once a month for sampling. So if it's been down twice, we, I guess I need to ask Gary to do sampling.
Okay.
Nice that it's a lower power build, but, yeah, but we talked about putting it, and we were gonna. Nice, it's a lower power, but a little bit, yeah, but, we talked about doing it, and we're going to program it to come on every other month, but because Gary has to turn it on to sample, that comes on once a month to sample.
How can we have to sample that? It's not a source we're using, is it?
It's listed as a source we're using.
Oh.
So, yes.
Yes, we are.
So, we could do that, but then we couldn't pump into the system, and they would want us to disconnect it, which is equally problematic.
Yes, understand.
But it's faster to just take the fourteen dollar sample.
Understand.
The Epic Engineering invoice under the water, we had three samples taken, total of two forty-nine there. The Maverick's excavation invoices are listed there of what has been paid thus far, and also the ranch road water line on the first page. All of that is actually the impact fee fund, I should have separated that, I will do that from now on, but anyway. So, we're down to Maverick's excavation, you can see that they've been paid.
Was there any change orders, or is there a question?
Yeah, that's why we're here, is the change orders, so I think, if the original contract was paid, the change orders is, is why Maverick is here today, tonight.
Do we have that separate change order in front of us here?
I've got something that Epic sent me, I don't know if that's all.
So, Ryan, quickly, the, the change order amount was?
About fifteen thousand dollars.
Sorry.
It's on here. Oh, that's fine. No problem.
Yeah, just turn it off.
I brought it, but it was on my computer, so I, I, the, the increased amount that was asked for was seventeen thousand four sixty-eight. It consisted of four items, um, one was, uh, to, to place some sod for about forty-eight hundred dollars, so when we did the design, plotted it, it was all, there, there was a nice block that was snowed down, but come spring, when we walked it, there was an area where the homeowner had put down sod for winter, I guess, um, and, and made the yard look very nice, so, we talked to, we talked it over with some of the town folk, town, and, and realized, if you wanted to make his yard nice, we should probably put back nice, that's, that's what we did during all our other water lanes, is we restored what was there, more or less. And so, we, we agreed to that price at, at the square foot price, and then after we got done, we measured the square footage. Uh, there was one hydrant, we were going to replace, we were going to reuse the hydrant, when we got it dug up, we, we didn't want to reuse that hydrant. There's a number of things wrong with it, it was way too short, um, so we would have had to bring the pipe up, because, so, we added a hydrant to the, to the contract price, and so, uh, we just went with the, there was a line item for fire hydrants for the six that we installed, so we just went with that price, and added another one. Um, another item that came up that we argued about quite a bit, and, and agreed on forty-eight hundred dollars, is there are a number of utilities that were not marked when we bid. And so, before, before Maverick bid it, they went out and they blue-staked all the utilities and complex, so they'd understand what they're up against, and when they got out there, there was a bunch of other stuff that showed up, and so, we went back and forth quite a bit, but had it been marked properly, we would have paid for it anyway, because all the bids would have been higher, and so after going back and forth, we agreed to two hundred dollars a crossing for a total of forty-eight hundred dollars, and I think that's, based on some other contracts and some other negotiations I've been in, I think that's a fair and reasonable price. And then the last item was additional square footage, so we bid out the asphalt repair for everywhere across, we put in the laterals, all those laterals across the road, um, and we had estimated about three foot cut, I'm going to let Maverick speak to this, but because the asphalt, the condition of the asphalt, some other things, we ended up with a much, much wider patches in, in a lot of areas, and, and that turned out to be, uh, basically an additional thousand square feet of, of asphalt, for about fifty-five hundred dollars.
The fifty-five, is that the, just the asphalt, additional asphalt?
That's the additional asphalt, yes, uh, and then there was one water service that we had on the plans that we realized we didn't need, so we took that out, and so it was a savings of twenty-one hundred, and so that's detailed here.
So, my question to Ryan with regards to, I guess if you wouldn't mind coming up and just explaining that fifty-five hundred on the asphalt, why, why it was wider, if we needed to. Anything else sound unreasonable as far as some of the unexpectedness, but, uh.
Can I use the board there, my name is Maverick Peterson.
The marker's up there.
On Ryan's right.
Okay.
So, when we, we put your water line across the road, we did use an accelerator with a three foot bucket, and so, obviously, we have to dig a three foot wide trench if we're that wide, that's what it is, you come up, if you measure, we had seven road crossings, and a three feet wide, that's where you come up with about your six hundred and fifty square foot of asphalt repair, that's what you should have had. But, your asphalt was cracking, breaking out, caving in, when we dig it out, and the funny thing was, I mean, Epic seen this, they were out there, we put your water line in on the side of the road, which was straight cobbled, when we went across your road, that was the only place we found topsoil, it was like.
Do we have topsoil?
Two feet thick.
It's under our roads.
So, reasonable debate here is, can we tear up the road and sell the topsoil for enough money to put a new road?
And you didn't have a lot of road base under your, your asphalt, so it was, it was breaking out, clearing the air, so we just made the decision to patch it, right?
It wasn't.
Now, I heard that, maybe I should have called somebody, maybe I should, you know.
My, my, my question, and what you probably heard, was, so what was the spec width of that trench?
Thirty.
Okay, so you used the right bucket on it, but due to the thin asphalt, due to the, what you're just describing, that's why we had to go over on the asphalt covering?
Yeah, and I mean.
To repair.
I could have used the two foot bucket on it, I mean, but that's about the smallest they could use, so if you put a two foot bucket on it, it's not going to change anything that happened here, other than six inches on each side.
And the spec was three foot anyway, right, as far as?
Well, his spec was two feet, but it, as the widest trenches I'd had to have, I, I could have used a two foot bucket.
Okay.
But all I'm arguing is, if I'd have used the two foot bucket, I'd have dropped a one foot skinnier trench, taped that off my bill. It adds up to about two hundred and ten square feet, so, that's why.
So, that's.
I'd like to resolve it, if I could, if that's a possibility.
That's my question, does the council have any other questions with regards to those change orders?
No, I have ultimate confidence that if he's got a change order in, and got past Ryan at this point, it's a good change order. He earned it.
Do you have a motion? Do you have any more warrants to go up to before we, um, yeah, we do, so.
I would make, can we get a motion just for the change order?
Yeah.
And then a motion for the warrant separately, sorry, I don't want to get paid.
No, so we have a motion to, to, for that specific change order to get paid, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second, any discussion on it?
Do we need to include seventeen thousand four hundred sixty-eight, what's the other five in that motion?
Okay.
Can I include that in my motion? Did you get that number in?
Yes, it's on the document that Eric's going to give back.
Second's got to stand, or you change his motion.
Okay, second, second with the, uh, change, change or correction on the dollar amount, and so, um, any last discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There we go.
Resolving.
You're welcome, thank you.
Talk of the pain in the.
Thank you for the job.
Looks good out there, you guys did a good job. You just can't add four more hours to this bill. We did get some complaints, but none in writing, so you did say. Thank you very much.
Thank you for the thanks.
At the bottom of that is the payroll form, and it is, so let's go back to the first page on the account of Daniel. Feds is reimbursed, phone postage, two bills from Wasatch Way, the Polaris method software, was twenty-five hundred dollars, and they billed us for the first quarter's software support, and they are very, very good to work with, and we all love the program.
Awesome.
A learning clerk, perp, but even Kathy Jones is doing, doing water bills. A lot of Epic Engineering invoices there, as you can see, they're unweighted, once again, the seventy-eight thirty-nine comes out of the school impact fee. Our new software does have streets and highways under public works, so when we look at a completed budget, things might set up a little bit differently, but I've gone ahead and put all of the roadwork under that category.